All right. Good morning, everyone. We are back. And we're gonna move on to our agenda. And right now, we have a a presentation or an introduction by Commissioner Wes McCart and Eric Johnson. He they are, he's with WASAC, the Washington Association of Counties. I want to welcome them. And the stories we could tell, right? But we will choose not to. So I'm gonna go ahead and hand it over to either Mark or Eric or Wes and have them dive in.
I think Commissioner McCart will start, and I don't know any stories, Commissioner Trask.
Yeah, that's not true.
Okay, so, um, good morning. Um, I'll just dive in here. Hopefully you've read the briefing paper and have a little understanding of this. So the proposal is for the National Center of Public Lands to basically be a research. Uh, I don't wanna say think tank. It's more of just a research arm of of the public lands issues around the country. Right now, we don't have but what we can get out of NACO for being able to do research on public lands. Secure Rural Schools and Pilt, of course, are one of the main topics. But those are, those have been, uh, we've been supplied by NACO some pretty good information. What we haven't been supplied on is other aspects, and I'll just throw out a couple of examples. One of the examples that comes out of of what do we need is we have a lot more people visiting our public lands now, our national parks, our state lands. It's it's a, there's a bigger need for services in those areas. There's a lack of housing or the for the for like forest rangers in some of around some of the national parks. So one of the things that could be done a- as an example would be able to research what is the need for housing around, let's say, national parks. That's where we start, or state parks, or other public lands uh, around the country. And and what's the row? What are some of the roadblocks perhaps to to those items? So the idea of this is to take this, um, we all received funds from the LATCF funds, which we didn't expect to have. And if we take 1% of these monies from around the country and put it into this 501(c)(3) to be able to do this research, we can do this research off of the money that would be generated from that 1%. And it would be able to continue for years and years and years. Uh, the makeup of that oversight of the center would be a staffer from NACO, your leadership of WIR, and your leadership for the Public Lands Counties. Committee at NACO, uh, would also be one director from around the country. And and a few other people be the director of, uh, NACO, the executive director of NACO would also sit on the board. And they'd have the oversight on on what projects move forward. With that, I think I will just stop and let Eric pipe in, and then maybe just answer questions would be easiest.
Great. And, uh, and Commissioner McCart, I don't know fully, you're mentioned you're Stevens County Commissioner, you're also second vice president of the Western Interstate Region uh, of the National Association of Counties, and I think you serve as the uh, chair of the payment subcommittee for the National Association of Counties as well. So Commissioner McCart's really engaged in these issues, so it's an excellent resource. Uh, so I'm glad he's here with us this morning. So in Washington State, uh, just to remind you, about 43% of our state is owned by the federal government or in public land sta- status. And, uh, roughly, um, if you take that and subdivide that a little bit more, uh, we have, uh, about 12.7 million acres which are federally owned. Uh, so it's a significant amount of resources. You obviously have a number of public lands in Mason County. And and it varies from county by county. Our smallest publicly owned county is, uh, about 5%, which is Whitman County. Uh, there's not much, uh, public land down in the Palouse. Uh, and then Skamania County in southwest Washington is 80, 86% federally land ownership. So it ranges pretty dramatically. Uh, but across the landscape, our counties, um, are significant recipients, um, of what I would say payments, federal payments, and that's what makes this a really important issue for us. Uh, there are four federal payments that we kind of track, uh, secure rural schools, which is a payment that Mason County gets almost $300,000, and most of that goes to your county road fund. Uh, the pay Pilt, our payment in lieu of taxes of federal land ownership. Uh, in fiscal year, federal fiscal year 2021, uh, Mason County got $331,000, and that goes to your county current expense fund. We have two other payments. One's Department of Energy payment that just goes to three counties for Hanford. And then about 15 of our counties get a federal refuge payment. Um, you do not have a federal, um, wildlife refuge in your county, but we've got about 15 counties that do. So these are pretty significant resources. Across the board, uh, we average almost, uh, uh, almost $40 million, uh, in payments to our 39 counties. So it's a significant amount of resources to our, um, to 37 of our counties. There is a Kitsap is a county just north of you that gets no payment. Uh, we don't, they don't get payment for Department of Defense land, so they have no public land ownership other than that. Uh, and then Makayakum just has a small payment from a federal refuge, uh, so the rest of our counties are pretty significant recipients of these resources. And so uh, one of the things that we have been really looking at, um, and we've done this in our state lands, and your county has actually supported our effort. Um, for example, when we did the Marble Murellet, uh, study, we really looked at, um, uh, doing some research around what was the impact to our, uh, state timber harvests in particular off of having, uh, a marble murellet, uh, added, uh, in the EIS and added to, uh, some of the work that Department of Natural Resources was doing. And so we didn't have the data or the research, and so we actually assessed counties separately to be able to do that work. And so National Association of Counties, uh, along with the Western Interstate Region, uh, of NACO, started to look at this, uh, National Center for Public Land Counties, so that we began to have better data, research, information available to us to better grasp the overall impacts on, uh, federal lands, uh, in our counties. Let's not advocate, that's what NACO will be doing, is advocating, but taking the time to actually do some analysis and research of the impacts, whether they're recreational impacts or whether they're impacts on our law enforcement and public safety and search and rescue, and what's going on across the entire nation with those types of things. What's happening with public use and public impact on sanitation? I know during COVID you didn't have to go very far up into the US Forest Service and find a lot of folks, and that spills over onto our county road system and in our law enforcement and our public safety, um, factors as well. So one of the things that this center is designed to do, which is to be able to, number one, uh, generate the type of research and data gathering that, uh, we certainly don't have the resources to do now. And then secondarily, uh, create some of the materials that will be necessary to explain uh, and demonstrate, uh, both the benefits of having those resources, but also the potential impacts and needed solutions to deal with those resources. So, uh, that's a little bit more about, um, about what's happening. We've had probably about 10 counties have submitted their payments. Uh, these are all voluntary assessments. It is, um, uh, it, your pay, your assessment was based off of 1% of the resources that you uh, are being provided through the local assistance and tribal consistency fund or that LATCF that Commissioner McCart spoke about. Your county's receiving $795,769, so almost $800,000 in two tranches. Your first fiscal year tranche has already arrived, and we're hoping to see that second fiscal tranche fairly soon. Uh, so your assessment was $7,957 to be able to, uh, support the National Center for Public Land Counties. You'll, uh, you'll send that to WASAC if you are interested, and then WASAC will forward those on, uh, to the, to the, um, uh, the, the cent, the new center. The new center is governed by a separate 501(c) board of directors. It does not, it is separate from the National Association of Counties, but certainly has a linkage to them. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the center, or I know Commissioner McCart is much more engaged in this, but I just wanna talk a little bit about the overall, uh, strategy and the role that WASAC will be playing in assisting in that process.
Great. First, I wanna thank you guys both for coming. Um, I, I listened to your, um, information at the last or I guess the meeting before last at the LSE. But I figured you guys would be able to explain it a lot better than than I would. And so I really wanna thank you for coming. Commissioners, do you have any questions for, um, Eric or for Commissioner McCart?
Um, I don't have any, any questions, just comment. Um, first off, Commissioner McCart, appreciate your service on WIR. Um, it's a really important, uh, committee in NACO, and you do a great job representing uh, our state, uh, on that board, and so just really grateful for that. Um, and and so I actually would be supportive of this. I think, um, you know, what we saw during COVID in particular in Olympic National Forest, uh, through Hootsport was just an explosion of people coming into our community. Um, and in particular, Eric, you mentioned the the strain that it places on law enforcement and things like that. And so um, I, I think, uh, I think this is a good investment, um, to continue to put together the necessary body of research to continue, um, advocating on the NACO side, uh, you know, for these funds to come back into our communities. Um, because there's, there's twofold benefits to that. One, we wanna make sure that our public lands are taken care of and that they're accessible to people, but we also wanna make sure that when people are there accessing them, uh, that they're able to do that in a, in a way that's safe and consistent with our, with our local values. And so um, I think this is a, a good investment for us to be able to join with other, uh, public, uh, agencies across the country to do this work. And I saw that you had Eric Bryson involved, uh, at the, uh, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And so if, if if Bryson is advocating for it, it can't be a bad thing.
Yeah, Eric Bryson is my peer at Montana. He's, uh, he's a character, but super knowledgeable on this issue. Obviously, Montana is another western state that has significant public land. And but Commissioner McCart, for, uh, a little bit for your information, um, Hootsport on the Olympic, uh, on the canal uh, is the gateway up into, um, uh, towards Lake Cushman and further up into Staircase and Olympic National Park. And, uh, there was, uh, it wa- it was, to say the least, a very busy road uh, where people would just stop and block to either get to the lake or to hike or whatever it might be, and literally were blocking public safety and emergency vehicle access. And it was, uh, I think they even shut the road down for a while. I can't remember what they were doing, but managing traffic. It was, it was, uh, uh, it was quite a fiasco.
Yeah, I, I've actually heard that story, similar stories to that. Colorado's been very outspoken about impacts, but New Mexico, Colorado, Arizona, a lot of places just were hammered during COVID, and it hasn't slowed down a lot. So that's, that's been a big issue. Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Netherland? Oh, you're muted.
Having an opportunity to, to have another voice, another location concerning these things is actually pretty important. It seems like a cheap enough price tag. Uh, aside from even the ones we discussed, we have other ones we're gonna have to have further discussions with at some point regarding Fudge Point. Uh, other places that the, the state and, and areas have also taken. Uh, once you start talking in one arena, you're gonna connect with even more people. So I think, uh, having more touches out there, uh, and more people, maybe we can talk about working together with regarding some of the state issues eventually. That's a good start.
Yeah, I think that I'm supportive, so. Let's get this on the agenda. Or approval, it sounds like.
Excellent. Thank you. Great. Let us know if you have any more questions. Thank you.
Yes, thank you both for, for zooming in. It was good to, to see you.
Easy way to meet. Thank you.
Yeah, what's your, what's your availability later today? You got some time for a quick phone call?
I do. I'm, uh, after about four is the best for me today.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Good, thanks.
Alrighty, thank you both again.
Thank you. Right, bye.
Thank Wes.
All right, let's move on to, um, our planning advisory interview. Do we have the applicant, is he on? Would be Brad?
He is, page two.
Ah, wow, we've got two pages for a meeting. That's exciting. All right, Brad, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. I just unmuted. Can you hear me?
We, absolutely, absolutely. Yes, yes, we can.
I cannot unfortunately get to the lower row of the screen at the moment. I've got to see what's preventing my, uh, uh, so I can turn on my camera. And, uh, let's see, start camera. Hide my let's see there. Minimize it slightly and, uh, now.
And there you are. All right, Brad, we wanna thank you first for, for applying and, um, agreeing to be interviewed. So we have seven questions that we're gonna ask you. We'll alternate in quest, on the questions. Um, there are, like, Commissioner Netherland likes to say there are no wrong or right answers. So we will alternate. We'll start with Commissioner Netherland, Commissioner Shute, myself, and then we'll just alternate through that and, um, no pressure.
Okay. So, uh, what do you see as a function of the Planning Advisory Commission, the PAC?
Well, I guess just a strategic planning for the future for the economic, social, um, environmental advancement of, of the county. So we can particularly related to that last speaker. I guess, uh, see if we, how we can move, move along, move the county in, into the future the best way possible.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, Brad, why do you want to serve on this advisory board?
Well, I've, uh, my family has been in Mason County, Hootsport, Potlatch, since my grandfather immigrated from Sweden in 1928. Although my father, uh, worked for Warehouser, um, and I was raised in Tacoma. We had our beach property in Potlatch since 1954. And, uh, I basically were taught, bought the family home in Hootsport on Hanson Hill. So that, uh, I, and basically, as, as I just retired last Oc- uh, October, I really wanted to follow in my father's footsteps. Um, he, he retired here and, uh, was a Potlatch uh, port commissioner and, uh, built the Hootsport Trail. He was a water board chairman for Potlatch Beach Mutual Water Company that, um, Ernst Carlson, who, his great uncle, um, donated to pot this homeowner down Potlatch. So I, I guess I wanna try and be halfway as good as my father following his footsteps.
All right, thank you. So, um, please describe your familiarity and understanding of the Comprehensive Plan, the Growth Management Act, and Development Regulation.
Well, I guess I, I haven't been able to study any plans that you guys have. So I, I can't comment on that at all. But all I can say is, um, I, perhaps I could have prepared, but I, I didn't, didn't bother for this interview to, to find out what the plans were, but I had been involved in strategic planning for my, my volunteer society, the International Society of Water Mason, for which I, as a life member of that society, I've been involved in strategic planning for it. And I've been involved, and I've been on technical conference program committees for, uh, 23 years from 97 till 2018. And so I can take that experience from my technical society and, uh, again, look at the plans that you have developed thus far and, and, uh, also take the experience that I had from, uh, the construction projects on four continents um, to commission industrial facilities and try to do that same sort of thing, uh, to bring new industries here to Mason County. Can't really say much more than that.
That's okay.
I was perfect.
So Brad, what is your opinion of rural development?
Well, I guess, uh, have to say we wanna keep the, we wanna keep nature, so we've gotta keep the balance between, um, the, uh, between nature and yet we have to coincide. You know, God put, God put nature and the, the mountains and, and ri- and rivers, uh, at our disposal to have, we can have dominion over them. And, uh, so I guess the most important part to me is I, I, I don't wanna see the canal get the red tides like the recipe sounds. So I think basically just, uh, strike a balance between coexistence be- between us and the animal, and the animals and the, and the, and the nature. We, we can't be, we can't leave it all natural. We have to to grow. We have to, we have to impact it a little bit, Kobe. I guess I would not want to, uh, put it in danger.
Great. Um, Brad, what, uh, this board meets in the evening at least once a month. Currently, uh, they, they do have the Zoom option available as well. Um, will this be an issue for you?
Nope, I, I basically do have some ties uh, over in, uh, Richland, Washington, Benton County, where I have my airplane hangar, which that's my, my background there is is the, is the hangar. So I'm not actually not actually in the hangar right now. So I basically just intend in retirement to split time between here and there.
That's awesome. So do you have any conflicts of interest, um, of the county code or any county code violation?
I guess since I am a trustee of the Potlatch Beach Mutual Water Company, I, there, there possibly could be one, um, but I'd have to be, I, I maintain any ethical standards, I guess, to, uh, if, if a particular decision could impact that, I might recuse myself. But, uh, and other than that, just my natural desire not to have Hood Canal destroyed by any development.
So Brad, do you have any, this is the last question for you, maybe. Do you have any questions for us?
Nope, I guess I didn't take the time to, as I said, perhaps I should have prepared better. But I really don't, um, other than I would hope that that you, you county commissioners would, would eh, would, I guess, echo my sentiment that we don't want to, uh, or actually, I guess I'll, I'll put it in the form of a question. Do you, would you more or less agree with what I said if I was, if I explained it well enough that, uh, the last question that you asked me about rural development, would you think, will you agree that we have to keep, uh, balance? Not to keep everything natural? A- a- as I said before, but, uh, us to have the domain over it without, but being good stewards to nature. But the only question I could think of at the moment.
May I take that one, Commissioner, for a minute?
Sure.
Yep.
So Brad, uh, yes and no. I definitely hope that that's the way it always ends up, but the position, I served on it for many years with past chair. I know Commissioner Shute did as well. The position actually uh, involves making sure rules, regulations are followed, that if there is an adjustment, there's some policies that we've that we choose to allow for expansion. For example,
Yeah.
they, a property wants to become, uh, rural residential, and it was commercial. If it's surrounded by other rural residentials, uh, we allow it, even though we may want commercial. The same thing goes for, uh, uh, commercial property that's surrounded by rural residential. If there's, uh, commercial property next to it, uh, we usually try to allow uh, for the flexibility to do these things. We put the rule and the regulation first, and if we don't like the rules and the regulation, then we, uh, bring forward a recommendation to change that.
Okay. Seems fair.
All right. Any other questions or concerns or anything, any questions for us? Any other question?
None for me.
All right. All right. So the next step in the process was, is that we, we will discuss your application and then, um, staff will get back to you.
All I can ask.
Thank you, Brad.
Thanks, Brad.
Take care.
Thanks, Brad. All right, Commissioners, do you wanna save discussion for, um, the end, or do you wanna make a decision now?
Uh, we can wait.
Okay.
To our support, rest of support, uh, services, great.
All right. All right. Thanks, Brad, again for zooming in.
Okay. Talk to y'all later.
All right, thank you. All right, let's move on to support services. Mark, take her away.
Thank you, Commissioner Trask. We've got, uh, Jen on for, uh, March financial report.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Jen, and happy birthday.
Oh, thank you.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thanks. I'm gonna share my screen. Okay, so beginning, this is the financials for March. So beginning on, um, page two of your, of your, um, packet there, we have, um, the revenue for current expense so far through, um, through March, we have received $10,031,046 in current expense. And compared to last year, we received $9,718,661. And we are at 24% of our budgeted revenue, um, compared to last year, we were at 24%. So overall, that looks pretty good. Right in line where we should be. And, um, as always, feel free to stop me if you have questions along the way. This, um, next sheet is the treasures detailed revenue. And so far through March, we have received $6,268,515 compared to last year's $6,443,849. We're at 22% of our budgeted revenue received in the treasures department compared to, um, 24% at this time last year. No major things, I don't think, besides, um, property taxes are a little bit down. We've got, um, this increase in sales tax that keeps on going. Um, we've got the, oh, the major thing, um, the major, uh, decline in revenue that we've seen is in the city county assistance. And that makes sense, cuz that's related to, um, sales of, um, real estate. And so last year at this time, we had received, um, 1.189 million. We've received $230,000, and, um, that's I think a couple months behind, if I remember right. We received a, um, a quarterly payment, so that would be for for the end of December. So so that's where the decline is. We've seen, of course, an increase in our interest. We're at four hundred and eighty-four thousand compared to last year at twenty-four thousand. But I think that's all the major stuff in the treasures office that I can think of. In the expenditures for current expense, we have expended through March, eleven million one hundred ninety-six thousand four hundred twenty-nine dollars compared to last year in March, nine million eight hundred fifty-three thousand five hundred and eleven dollars. We're at twenty-four percent of our our expenditures, budgeted expenditures this year compared to twenty-three percent last year. And the benchmark, of course, is twenty-five percent being through March. The special fund six-year comparison. So this is all just specific revenue streams. We see the community development revenue is down somewhat. Not alarmingly so at five hundred thirty-three thousand compared to last year's six thirty-four and twenty-twenty-one, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand. And then everything everything else looks fairly flat. Except the sales tax, you know, it keeps on climbing. Which is great. The rural sales and use tax follows along with the other sales tax. So that's increased as well. The homelessness prevention filings are down. And that's expected with interest rates rising. The lodging tax is up, so that's great. And then the REIT is down as is expected with what's going on with the market. And, and the rate increases. This the interest rate increases. The county sales tax. We received through March, six hundred and sixty-one thousand. And so far through, through March, we've received two million one hundred, one hundred eighty-four thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars. And if we receive everything that we received last year in sales tax from April through December, we are on track to receive about nine point, just under nine point six million dollars. So that looks great. We budgeted eight point four, which was an increase from the prior year, twenty-twenty-two, we budgeted seven point two million and received close to nine point four million. So sales tax is healthy. That's great. The six-year financial recap. We have at the end of March, twenty-five million five hundred seventy-three thousand in cash and you can see all of our reserves. We've got about seven million seven hundred ninety-three thousand in unreserved cash at the end of March. Again, we're at twenty-four percent of our budgeted revenue in the general fund compared to twenty-four percent of our budgeted expenditures. And the special fund cash balances. We have fifty-four million three hundred fifty thousand one hundred fifty-seven dollars at the end of March. And that's a large increase over the previous five years, but we do have that American Rescue Plan Act that we'll be talking about in a moment. We have got about seven point five million sitting in there. So that's a large chunk of this fifty-four million. The motor pool summary, we're at we've expended three hundred and ninety thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars, which is at about twenty-three percent of our budgeted expenditures. And you can see the, the breakdown of the different types of motor pool expenditures. And I'll be bringing forward to you maybe next week, the the end of the year comparison with ERNR. So just wanted to update you on that. The special fund revenues. We are at eleven million nine hundred eighty-four thousand forty dollars through the end of March, which is twenty percent of our budgeted revenue. Compared to last year, we had thirteen million four hundred seventy-nine thousand five hundred sixty-two dollars, which was eighteen percent of our budgeted revenue. On the expenditures, we have expended in special funds, eleven million one hundred forty-one thousand three hundred ten dollars. And compared to last year, eleven million four hundred seventy-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars. And we're at fourteen percent of our expenditures, which is where we were last year. Any questions on any of this or comments?
No, I love the way that you're, that you present this.
Thank you.
Need to follow. So I appreciate that.
Oh, good. I'm, I'm glad. Sometimes I feel like a, a broken record every, every month. So thank you.
It's not a bad thing when the
Yeah. I was gonna say, you're making me weak because it's getting so easy to do, where I used to have to do all my own homework on this stuff. I've got to admit, I might be getting lazy a few times here and there.
Well, good. That's what it's intended to do is make you not work as hard. So okay, great. I'll stop my share and, and actually I'm going to do a new share on the
Before you go further, though, on the special and other funds revenue comparisons. I just want to point out to the commission, because we're going to be talking about different things later on. Budget wise, our REIT one, REIT two are between thirty-five and forty percent below what we were budgeting, where we should be in comparison to the year before. That's a big amount. And I just wanted to point that out so you can so you could see that we're sixteen percent collected this year compared to twenty-six percent last year. Eighty percent compared to twenty-seven percent last year. That's a decrease of well more than, much more than a third.
On the revenue?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we got kind of spoiled with the REIT, you know, when the housing market was doing so amazingly. And hopefully it will pick back up again. We're kind of in an off season right now, right?
Well, this would be the same year, year after year, though. Off season would be off season last year and the year before that.
That's true.
Part of my agenda last week at the county administrators conference that I was at involved in economic forecasts by Steve Lurch, who's our state actuary. And when you look at the next four years of revenue that he's projecting, I think some of the largest decreases that he's seeing are in the real estate excise tax.
Right. I think he also present, did a presentation for LSC. And I think, did I share that with you? It was in the packet that they, that they sent on. So I think that all the commissioners may have received that also. But if not, let me know.
I think it's a, it's a prudent time to say that I that I'm glad that you guys were as fiscally responsible as you have been over the last few years. And I feel like we have a balance that is going to, to really carry us through a recession. Hopefully it's a short-lived recession. But definitely are in a position where it doesn't feel like there's this pending doom coming with, with some of the decreases that we've seen. I think that, that the forecasts that I've looked at are starting to, they're, they're projecting a decrease in sales tax growth in twenty-four.
Yeah, we've gotten very spoiled, I feel like, with our sales tax, with it increasing and it you know, it's probably not going to do that forever, like you said. So yeah. We do have a lot of cash right now, but but yeah, I feel like it's a good place to be. I'm going to share my ARPA briefing list, which is the next thing on my list. I can find it. I have too many things open. Okay, so the next thing that I'm briefing is just the, the ARPA projects update and Kate is on, in case there's any specific questions that I need help with that she can't answer. I mean, I can't answer, not that, that she can answer. Sorry, I can't talk this morning. So we have obligated and this is as of the end of December. And I chose to do that because this has been reported to the treasury. And we've balanced it. We're still working on March. Kate has March about, about done. It's all balanced out, but I wanted to make sure this what we were reporting on was actually accurate. So since we're not finalized on March, that's why it's so far back. We have obligated thirteen million seventy-nine thousand eight hundred twenty-six dollars and eighty-four cents in ARPA funding. And we have, we've received twelve million nine hundred sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and one dollars. So we are over obligated just a little bit. And that is due to I think what happened is we, we didn't include the Port of Allen Water Company, the hundred thousand in our obligation. So we have a couple of options. We can we can reduce the amount that we have obligated in administration. This piece is not reported in the the federal treasury, our quarterly report. And so so anyway, we can, we can choose to, right now, we're, we're paying for Kate out of support services and then transferring the money out of ARPA for her salary and benefit costs. So that's one option. The other option is we have a couple of projects that are that are complete and that have funding remaining. And so, so that's a couple of options to take care of the amount that we're over over obligated, or we can wait and see if there's any other projects that come in that cost less than, than they than they thought they would.
Personally, Jennifer, I'd like to just wait and see and allocate, reallocate back into our ending funds balance, anything that is not utilized. And in the end, it should wash itself out unless you come across a dead date where you need to to readjust our budget somehow to show it. If not, I think we should hold on, it'll cover itself here shortly. Then we'll have a good understanding of what we'll have to work with after the fact. If we start moving things around now, we may have to put it back in that. Unless you really need to have this thing shored up today, I'd rather just wait.
No, I, I would, I think that is exactly the way I would handle it too. And and that's why I brought up the, the administration piece. We don't have to report that to, to the feds. And so it doesn't look like we're over obligated when, when we're reporting that. This is the amount we've reserved for for salaries and benefits to administer ARPA. And so yeah, that, that would be exactly what I would recommend is just holding off, seeing if there's any any other projects that come in under and just reallocate that to
Well, isn't there a good chance that some of that will be unfilled positions by the end as well that didn't get expended?
No, I mean, I hope not. This is Kate here. So I'm hoping that she stays.
No, I'm talking about the whole amount of four hundred and thirty thousand. If that's Kate, we're in real trouble.
Well, that's over a six-year period. So we've already expended ninety, ninety-one thousand for just the one year. So I, I think that that's going to be probably right there with with what we need, maybe even a little bit under. So so yeah, I don't think there's going to be any, any money left in there.
Okay.
Well, I think some of the projects that you, in, in reviewing all of this, it looks like some of the projects have, aren't, aren't going to hit their high mark, that it's going to be a little bit lower. So I, and I, I agree with Commissioner Netherland. I think that we should just to hold off and see, see what we need to do by, well, has to be we have until twenty twenty-four, right? The end of twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, we have until December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four to obligate the money. After that point, it has to be spent as we have obligated it. So we do have a little bit of time to figure out where we want to allocate and if there's any funds left over.
Yeah, I think I'm good holding off as well. I think just being able to, I mean, we'll you know, the, since it's reimbursing or being reimbursed into support services. You know, we can just adjust as needed as we get closer to that that date in twenty twenty-four. So it's good to keep an eye on and good for us to know where things are trending, but I don't think we have to make a bunch of decisions right now about how to address the seventy-four thousand.
Okay. Perfect. Then we'll move on to the, the ARPA project updates and I'll stop my share. So, so Kate has been doing an amazing job of keeping everybody accountable on the, on the projects and and she did a summary of the responses that she received on the ARPA projects, the open ones that we weren't sure where, where they were at. And so now we have a better understanding of, of where these are at. And I think everything looks to be on track. There were a couple of highlights that I wanted to to go over. The Belfer substation, that looks like it's going to be done this year. That's the beauty. Camp slides. Looks like it's going to be done this year. The youth connection. It looks like they're, they're making progress. They have a little bit of funding needs there that they're trying to fill. North Mason Fire Mobile, the integrated health, Bo Bachan asked if he, he could give a, or said he would love to give a verbal update to the board. So is that something you would be interested in?
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Yeah, I would.
Agreed.
Great. So we'll reach out to him. Egghead Beach, it looks like they're, they're making progress and should be done this year. PewDieOne should be done this year or by early twenty-four. The DCD Records archival imaging, that's an ongoing project that won't be done until December of twenty-six, but they're making progress and that looks to be on track. So that's great. The fiber optic infrastructure upgrade, that is we're making progress on that and that should be done maybe as soon as twenty-three. Community lifeline, that's in the works and we actually, I have a briefing on that on a contract update later, later on. The Eldon Fiber. They anticipate being complete by, by June of this year. But they, and this is another one, the Eldon, for, for Hood Canal Communications, they wanted to they have leftover funding on the customer arrears funds. And so they would like to move that, or request to move the leftover funds to the Eldon Fiber Project. So that's part of your, your briefing packet. The crossroads homeless veterans assistance. They're making progress on that. And that's only a ten thousand dollar award. That they're thinking by June of twenty-four to be complete. The signing bonus for the deputies, there, we just paid out a couple of signing bonuses for eligible staff. The treasure, the property tax, the small business and and household. That's another part of this briefing packet. The treasure would like to combine those projects into one, which makes a lot of sense. And then the utilities, we're, we're getting that's active and we're getting requests for, for payment on that pretty regularly. The Port of Allen Water Company. They're making progress. Looks like that's going to be done soon. The Mason County Housing Authority. So this project, I have an email into Frank to, to meet with because he's retiring. And so we wanted to meet with Cause he's retiring, and so we wanted to meet with his replacement and him and, you know, make sure everybody's on, on board. So we'll be hopefully doing that before he retires and. Get everybody up to speed on that. Public Works has several different projects. The Yard Goats, that funding was transferred last year, so that's complete. Beards Cove. And Belfer Sewer Log Yard Design, they'll get underway in the next quarter. The pump stations, number one and number three, those are underfunded, or not underfunded, sorry, those are. Under expended by a hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. And so. Public Works may be requesting to transfer that funding to Belfair or some other project. The grinder pumps. Looks like those are about done. The Log Yard Road, I don't see an update on that. And the Belfer Sewer Extension, we, we had one point five million and that was transferred last year, so that is complete. So the Log Yard Road design, I think is the only one I don't. See on here. And Kate, I don't know if you, if you have anything you want to add. To Public Works. Updates.
I don't really have anything to add. I don't know that I thought an update specifically for the Log Yard Road design. What's on the bottom of that paper is all I received.
Okay. Thank you. The Sheriff's Office, the Bearcat is supposed to be done this summer. So that payment will go out all at once, so that's great. That'll be done. The DEM Disaster Recovery, we have about fifty thousand dollars. That we obligated there, but John was checking in to make sure that. His grants that he has would accept ARPA. As the, as a grant match. ARPA will allow. ARPA funds to be used for, for grant match, but he wanted to check on the other side of it, if his, his grants, if they would allow that. So. That's something that's in question right now and. So we'll keep you updated on that. The Belfer Water District New Well Backup Generators. Not sure if Kate got an update on that or not.
No, I didn't get an update. Directly. I think Mark filled me in a little bit that they were looking for more funding for the entire project, so. It's still in works.
They, they ran into a little bit of trouble with availability of generators, and so the timeline associated when they would get it was pushed out. As well as the, the cost, their original cost estimate was less than what the total cost appears to be. But they are finding some alternative resources to cover that difference.
Okay, great. And then we have the temp staff. I like your comment, Kate. I'm still. And then we have the completed projects. So you can see all the, the completed projects. That's great. So any, any questions or anything that you want us to follow up on, commissioners?
Just a small, just a small comment, I guess, that anybody that wants to reallocate or put anything through, I think it needs to go back through the process again. There's other. Programs that we may be able to use it better at, or there may be other fiber that we can maybe extend it out for a, a new project. At the end, if there's monies available. That's just my personal belief. Instead of reallocating stuff, we need to pay back what we need first. And then look at putting things back out again for new projects.
Okay, so with that. There are a couple of. Of requests here. We've, we've got the treasurer's formal request to. To combine the two projects into one for the arrears for property tax. We've got personal and then. Business property tax. And if we can combine that into one project, that would make it a lot easier for her. So we wanted to run that by you commissioners. I'm not really positive why it was turned into two. Different projects to begin with.
Is there a change in any of the monies going out from us? The dollar amount the same?
No, yeah, the dollar amount would be exactly the same. It would just be a combined amount. And Lisa, the treasurer had actually. Told me that the, the business side of the property tax. Is, looks to be complete as far as she can tell, but I thought it would be easier to combine them in case. Somebody comes back later and wants funding.
I have no issue with that at all.
I was, this was Lisa, I was just gonna jump in here. So originally I had asked for two hundred and fifty thousand for just the real estate side. And then had asked for another seventy-five thousand for the business side. You had asked if we could just use some of the real estate money for that. It was never my intention for it to get broke out, but somehow it did. And so I would really appreciate being just able to use it however I need it for foreclosure purposes moving forward. And hopefully. Most of that money should be extended. By the end of twenty twenty-four.
I'm good with that.
Great, thank you. The next request that we talked a little bit about. Is the Hood Canal Communications, they're requesting to reallocate eighty-seven thousand, that should be two hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-three cents. From the customer arrears to the Eldon Fiber build out.
Again, I, I, I don't think that we should be doing anything like that, put it back in for a new project, or perhaps they can reapply for more money on that project. When everybody else has an option to apply for it, but I'd actually like to see a new project. We already agreed that they do this much, and with that money, I expect that they would do that.
So probably not a surprise, I actually support the reallocation of the funding. I think it's. A good project. I think fiber projects cost a lot more money than. Then this would allow us to do on another area. And I think we've, we have a track record of being flexible with our. Partners on this kind of thing when it's come up in the past, so I actually would be supportive.
Diane, it's probably not a surprise that I support that too. As one living very rural and not having what I need or what I would like, I guess. I support any of the, especially since I'm on the Public Works Board and that's what we do. As far as helping out with broadband, so I support just the reallocation.
Okay, so, so I'm hearing we have two commissioners that support this, so I'll request that we put this on the. Agenda for, for the twenty-fifth.
Would the other two commissioners consider waiting until we see if we have our money, enough money to cover what we're doing? We need monies to come back. We just established that a few minutes ago.
I, I would. I would rather move ahead with this one. Because this is serving, serving all of our constituents in Mason County. And for broadband.
Well, it's serving one piece. There's other people. Yeah, okay.
For, how, how long, Commissioner? How, how long would you, because I, the reason I ask is. I don't know how, how like time sensitive this is, you know, if they have to pay contractors or, you know, this is a. You know, it's already being worked on. So I, I don't know. I mean, how long would you like to wait in order to see that happen?
Yeah, I wish I had a, a good answer for you, but I, I don't know. We'd know better in a couple of months whether or not we're going to have money coming back in. This is one of the projects that I knew the money was coming back in. I expected to use for paying back our shortfall, so. That's not going to happen now, so the shortfall will continue to be there. Well, I shouldn't say it's not going to happen. You guys haven't made your final fund decision. I've just. This is one of the ones that we were hoping was going to come back into to make the books right. So I still think that it's, you know, maybe in a couple of months we'll know, but other than that, I don't have a good answer for that. I'm sorry.
I still feel like that we're, we're going to have more monies coming back from other projects. There may not be. As far as like the taxes, helping people with those, there may not, there may be, may be some money coming back from that. There's a lot of what ifs. A lot of unknowns at this point in time. But. For me, being able to help people get connected is so important. We found out during COVID how hard it was. For the kids to do their school and things like that. So this is one project that I would absolutely support moving forward.
Commissioner, I've got a question for you on that, though. You, you saying to help get connected. This project was supposed to go through with that money that was already allocated. Are you saying that if we don't give them the extra, the project's not going to happen?
Well, I know through a lot of our, our projects through the Public Works Board. You would not believe how many are coming in and asking for extra funds because supplies. Have, well, they're short and, and on demand, but they've also gone up, so their expenses have really. Exceeded what they expected. Some of them are, I mean, in the millions. It's just, it's just crazy. To see the amounts that people are needing to, to complete their projects. And so I feel like this is one of those that just needs that extra little push to, to be able to complete that project.
I've never seen any of those numbers, so if that is, I don't know, I've never seen anything presented to us or anything.
So maybe the, maybe is an alternate option here. I mean, I don't know that. I don't know that they needed it, you know, like immediately, immediately, but it might be helpful to have Mike come in. And talk a little bit about the project and, and why. The reallocation is, is important to getting the project completed and. You know, kind of what their investment has been in this and maybe provide a little bit more information and, and kind of, you know, just. Also just true up how much of the eighty-seven thousand. They might need if, if it's a lower number or if it is that full amount. So that might be a good conversation for us to have in the interim and. Put a little bit more information around it. I, I just, I mean, to be clear though, I mean, I do support. Reallocating to the project, getting, getting a full project completed is, is, I think, really important, but. I think having a little bit more conversation with Hood Canal and Mike might, might be beneficial.
Right, maybe we can have them come in on the first, May first.
That'd be great.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, great. We'll, we'll reach out to Mike and see if he'll come and present.
I think it would be good to have all of us here. I think Commissioner Shute, you're, you're out the twenty-fourth, right? Twenty-fourth to twenty-fifth?
Yeah, but I'll be here May first, so that's. Might be in a different time zone mentally and emotionally, but I'll be, I'll be here physically.
Great. So the last thing that I have, oh, and I don't have a briefing sheet, I almost forgot. On the cameras, the camera installs for the sheriff's office, there is fourteen thousand. Two hundred dollars left and some odd change. I think it might be fourteen to eleven. Left on the camera installs, and I just wanted to see if we could clarify that. The approval, I think should have been for, for not just the installs, but for the purchase of the cameras themselves. And so I wanted to see if we could. Change the approval to include the purchase of the cameras. So just a clarification on that.
Seems fine to me.
As the installs are only, I think they're a couple hundred dollars, but the actual cameras are, so we'll never spend the money if, if it's just for the. The install on these new vehicles, but the cameras we need to pay for one way or another, and so. So if you're okay with that, commissioners, I'll add that on. Along with the property tax clarification, move that into one project.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you.
So Jen, just a clarification on that one. We spent seven hundred and two thousand on the body cameras. So there, are there additional cameras that are being purchased?
Yeah, so we have the body camera, the MCSO body cameras, we spent seven hundred and two thousand, three sixty-three. Eighty-four cents, so that one is complete. It's the one underneath that, the MCSO body camera install. Twenty-five thousand, seventy-nine fifty. We have fourteen thousand, two hundred and eleven left over. And so now we have, we can. Use that amount up with the. The new cameras that we have to purchase for new vehicles that we are getting this year. But if we're just paying for the install, we probably won't use up that fourteen thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars.
Great, thanks for that clarification.
You're welcome. So the last thing I have is on the amendment to the Community Lifelines ARPA contract. We just had a couple of. Of things that we wanted to amend. The date. We had put in December twenty-first, the signing of the contract, and we wanted to amend that to be. The effective date should be December first, so that was just an error correction. And then. We wanted to add in more detailed requirements into the. It's required to prove that community lifeline is spending the, the money, so we detailed that out. That we need. Detailed payroll expenditures. Itemized. By dates and hours worked by employee name and total salaries and benefits paid by the recipient. For each line item billed to ARPA, so that's the change there. So commissioners, this is ran by, or been ran by Tim Whitehead. And so if you're okay with it, I'm asking for this to go on the agenda for April twenty-fifth.
Sounds good.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all that I have.
Thanks, Jen.
You're welcome.
So Diane, you're up next on our, this is actually an ARPA approved project.
Yes.
So as you saw in the previous, I think we had allocated four hundred and.
Twenty-five.
Thank you. So here's an update for you on the bids that we received. Go for it, Diane.
Morning commissioners. So we went out for bid for installation of new fiber optic cabling between all the county buildings downtown. And we received two bids. And after review, which TJ, Mark and myself reviewed the bids, we determined one of the bids was non-responsive. They didn't include. Costs for all the specifications. And we did meet with Tim Whitehead and also consulted with MRSC on this. And so our staff recommendation is that we award to Hood Canal Communications. For their total amount of three hundred and four thousand, eighteen dollars. And as Mark said, we anticipated in ARPA up to four hundred and twenty-five thousand. So we're asking that the board place. This bid award on the April twenty-fifth, and I'll be bringing forward next week a, a contract.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, great.
Yep, thank you. And then I have the twenty twenty-two of inventory. It's inventory of our equipment that purchases for five thousand dollars or more. And then it includes our capital assets, which we get that information from Leo. Cassidy's been working with the departments to gather all this information. That's something we do every year, so I'd like to put that on the April twenty-fifth agenda also.
Sounds good.
Yes.
Yeah, I was good. I was just reviewing the prosecuting attorney's line.
Oh, yeah, it will remain. Thank you.
Thanks, Diane. And then do we have Mr. Taylor on for RCO grant update?
Yes, sir. Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Back last year when we applied for the RCO grant, the commission. Made a commitment that if the award was given that we would build a new field in Sand Hill. All-purpose field and do renovations to Union Park. On May eighth. Twenty twenty-three, we need to either commit. Or return the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, which was awarded for these two projects. We did not get the WWRP grant of five hundred thousand. We did not get the W W R P grant of five hundred thousand dollars. So the figures are in front of you. Which is the Sand Hill All Purpose Field is three point eight zero three millions. The Union Park renovation is one point eight four nine million, which is a total. Of six point six five two million commitment for the county, deducting, which is already deducted out the three hundred and fifty thousands. Which was for the uh. Let me get that. Uh, the Y A F grant piece, which we were awarded. So we're we'd like to put this on the agenda so the commission can make a formal decision on whether to accept the funds or return it.
So on these funds, uh, is it specifically only for construction or can it be used for design? Does it have a match uh component to where we're supposed to come up with the other? Uh, three plus million uh in order to do it? Uh, or is, are we able to just utilize that one piece? For uh design?
We are not, sir. According to the R C O, we would have to go in and reapply if we're gonna change any of the documentation which we submitted. For the approval of the grants.
I'm I'm from that region, so I'll go ahead and and step in it. Uh, I love the idea. I would love to have that part, but we don't have the funds available to be able to pull from REIT. Uh, to do anything of this magnitude there at that time, in my opinion. Uh, even though I would love to have it and would love to tell my community, hey, we got this coming. The county, in my humble opinion, is not in a position to do. Any of that.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I think I think both of these projects have a ton of value. Um, and it it's just a, it's a matter of dollars and cents. Um, can't do a. Multi-million dollar project with three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So uh I'm with you, Commissioner. I think. I think we need to not accept the grant and um kind of get back to the drawing board on how we how we make those improvements happen.
Yeah, I would I would tend to agree with that. I. Ha- having listened to the economic forecast, I would rather. Be a little bit more conservative on some of the things that we, I mean, if we have to do them, absolutely. But if it's a it an elective at this point in time, I would rather hold off for a bit and um wait for the economy to come back.
So wi- with that, if I could uh stretch a little bit, though, this conversation regarding the parks. So when we went around, we did our walkarounds, there are some things that I would hope that we would look to focus on immediately within the smaller. Amount of funds that are needed. One is, I know we had several of them that did not even have playgrounds for the kids. It would be, i- it was, it's sad to me that that we don't have playgrounds for some of these things. That Sand Hill is a perfect example of that. Uh, not having a single playground in the Belfort Urban Growth Area uh from the county in any way is kind of an amazing thing to me. Uh, the same would go for Allen, Belfort and Allen. But there was, I'm trying to rack my brain. I, we went to Union. And there was something that we all looked at each other when they were talking, that we thought they needed very badly, and I can't remember what it was.
I believe, sir. Yeah, I believe, sir, that was the restrooms, which are not ADA compliant. Plus, uh, the parking is in the right of way. Which creates a challenge for the county as well as walking into the park is not ADA compliant.
Didn't we meet a parent or something that told us we were? Man, it's it's not, it wasn't those. It was something absolutely necessary. Uh, we did talk about better use of ball fields and stuff up there as well, but I don't know if that can be done for any small amount of money. Because the other discussion was to get rid of the ball field, right?
Well, and maybe this is, we we talked about capital projects and things that we wanted to prioritize. Maybe this is one of those things that we add to that list and and. Decide where the greatest need is first and then work down. Cause I know in also in Belfort, um, right by the. That park.
Yes.
We talked about that also.
Yes.
Which I think would be, you know, I think. I don't know. I I can't hear about cost or anything like that.
I I I reached out and the, at the time, there was no interest, but the economy is changing. Uh, I will reach out one more time. But uh, please, uh, I I don't know why. I just remembered that whatever that thing was in Union, I. I walked away with those trips thinking that that was the biggest need that our biggest. Issue that was lacking in in the parks for a region. I just remember thinking to myself that that region was being. We we were not following through and they were almost denied something because we didn't follow through. And I can't remember what it was. I just remembered that I had that as my number one at the time we walked away. So please let's give that some thought. Maybe we can go back and figure out what. That parent was saying to us or something. There was something that came across.
Yeah, I can't remember either.
But you you do remember us having that that discussion, right? It was.
Yeah.
It was very important at the time.
Right, and that little kid was having so much fun on that little.
Yeah, that was crazy.
Our world, yeah.
So, yeah, if you don't mind, let's bring that back and mark uh include the 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 little playgrounds uh at some of these parks. It's kind of important that we have. Opportunity for the kids to actually use them. It shouldn't be that expensive if we do it right. Uh, it doesn't have to be nothing crazy uh out of this world, but I'd love to see what cost would look like for something simple. But if we remember that other, go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Sorry about that. I thought you were finished. Um, I, we also have, you know, the 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 Parks Commission. Maybe they want to take a look at these also and and give us their feedback.
Actually, that was a mistake on our part. We should have wrote wrote down what we were doing and sent it to them first. But we didn't, and I don't remember what it is.
That was so long ago, Randy.
Like I said, I just remember it was really important. Dot com.
Well, we can, we can definitely um do that and and potentially go back to the Parks Board and. And ask their opinion and just kind of structure it to say, to talk specifically about playground equipment and opportunities that we have that they could help us evaluate. Um, and then just to just to clarify, uh, the funding that we utilize for parks um. Is actually the second quarter percent of real estate excise tax. So that's a little bit different than the presentation you're gonna see later today.
And thank you, John, for for doing all the work on this one.
You're welcome.
No, but ouch.
Yeah, sorry, we couldn't come up with the aggressive for you, John.
No, got it, sir. That's all I have.
All right, thanks, John.
Thank you, John. So the next deal, we have an update from Mary on her strategic plan for twenty three.
Morning.
Morning.
I had promised back in twenty twenty two, we developed our twenty three twenty four strategic plan that I would come um in front of the board and give quarterly progress reports. Um, and so I just wanted to go over an H R's mission statement, which is to develop and manage people-first human resources policies, programs, and provide expert consultation services and solutions. In an efficient and customer-focused manner, and then provide our employees and volunteers with what they need to provide services to the public. So in order to achieve our mission, um, in your packet is our twenty three twenty four strategic plan. And then I put on the right side a new column with our first quarterly update. Um, currently, we have ratified four contracts. The non-rep class and comp study um has been completed and uh implemented. In bulk with a couple outstanding un-benchmarked positions that we'll come back for. The board has approved us to move forward with an F S A. Um, down into recruitment and hiring, uh, we've had a seventy percent increase in followership on LinkedIn. We are working to link our Instagram account to the county's Facebook. And we've got about three thousand seven hundred fifty followers on Facebook, which is awesome. For diversity and inclusion, we delivered two legal and effective interviewing classes since the last time we talked and now. And I think that the big thing for those was really thinking about not hiring for fit, but hiring for addition. We don't want, you know, hiring of. People to create homogenous groups. We want to make sure that we've got a lot of different diversity in people at the table. And then in learning and development, um, we created and put out there a supervisor toolkit. Um, I'm hearing a lot of hiring managers anecdotally using it and. Asking questions and being engaged uh in with those tools. In fact, the commissioners, you yourselves used our performance. Evaluation uh worksheets before the end of the year. So that was awesome. And we delivered two leadership classes, and then we're hosting a supervisor bootcamp here in Mason County on May sixteenth. And so there was a county one email that went out and highly recommend manager supervisors, directors. And electeds to participate in that class. It will be really great. It's put on by the risk pool. Um, we did an employee engagement survey. I did brief that on February twenty seventh of this year, and then we got a hundred and forty two responses, which is. Pretty good for an engagement survey. And then next, uh, this. Coming winter, we'll do it again and start measuring year over year how our engagement is looking with our employee population. And then Commissioner Shute conducted our first employee town hall on February twenty third, which is awesome. Um, for my staff development, uh, we've got employees that are out spending time with different groups in the county to understand better how they work. So the roads crew, clerk's office, sheriff's office. Uh, jail tour, that kind of thing. We're out trying to understand our um customers as best that we can. And then I brought forward two updates to personnel policies just this year, not counting last year. And I'm sure there will be more to come because I feel like that's all I talk about. So that's just kind of an update of where we're at in our first quarter, and I wanted to make the commissioners aware and then answer any questions that you have about H R's strategy moving forward.
I think you're doing a great job. Really appreciate you having having you as part of our team is um has truly benefited the county. So I wanted to thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mary, I appreciate this. I I really like the format here, and I mean, it's easy to follow and and see where progress is happening. And I I think um. I think this is a really good tool for us to use and something that would be beneficial in multiple departments, but I I think this is, this is super helpful.
Yeah, we'll have to be proud of, Mary. Great job.
Thank you. The other thing I did want to mention is the team is super focused on getting out to some events. So we'll be at Olympic Community College. We're gonna be at South. So Puget Sound Community College, and we're partnering with Pierce County. They're gonna let us. Come set up when they pay for a booth and let us kind of share a table with them. So so we get our uh. Feet up under us around that. And then we're also gonna work on doing our own Mason County. Career fair this summer. So we're working on getting a planning team together and having our own internal uh community career fair, which will be really fun.
Fantastic. That's great.
Yes, that's awesome. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Uh, so your next agenda item topic is to kind of go over uh our capital expenditure plan for twenty twenty three. And in your packet, you should see a spreadsheet. So I've. Laid out and worked with with um Jennifer, kind of talking about how much money do we currently have in our REIT one fund? Uh, this is fund three fifty. And what is our estimated revenue? So we did revise our estimated revenue down. Um, I think it was originally one point. Five million or eight million, and it's down to one point three now. So within this. Analysis, just wanted to let you know that we did uh modify our 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 current revenue projections. Um, so we're starting the year out with about two point three million dollars on hand. Um, obligations that we pay out of this fund on an annual basis include uh money for a couple of G O bonds to the tune of about. Three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, that also includes your state auditor's office charges and then internal allocation charges that we. That we spend. So I think the the point of this was to highlight. Um, as we enter twenty twenty four, I want to make sure that you're aware that we need to have and and reserve some cash. Uh, in order to to meet those obligations that come up on an annual basis. And then I have listed down here the discretionary projects, and they're not in any specific type of order. Um, I will have more. Solid numbers because uh Kelly and his team has actually completed some of these projects. Uh, but there was, the board had approved the auditor's office to do a remodel. Of their upstairs, so they moved individuals from their current elections processing environment. To work out of the office upstairs and then did some modifications to uh the downstairs. And I think Kelly thought that that would come in right around ten thousand dollars. Uh, he has kind of a blank blanket, ten thousand dollars for carpet replacement. Uh, they did recently re-carpet um some a much needed area. Over in our financial services section, and he has some other carpeted areas that that definitely need attention uh throughout the county. So. He would be spending that. Uh, the board approved a purchase of the building twelve, which is our. Facet- future facilities and coroner's office would be located in that. Um, that. Is moving forward. I believe that uh. Any day now, we should receive an environmental report and we should be able to move forward on that purchase. So I feel like that five fifty is going to be spent for sure. Um, that we did have some estimates for, we're gonna have to put up a firewall in that building once we actually acquire it. Uh, as well as as purchase a cooler for our corner. Uh, we thought that that would be about twenty five thousand. Um, the the coroner's office cooler is is right around fifteen thousand. Uh, and then we would have about ten thousand to have our our staff build a firewall. Um, and and the reason we would be building that firewall within building twelve was just to ensure that we didn't have to upgrade it to current code. Uh, which would require sprinklers in the facility. And predominantly, we're utilizing it for storage. Um, although we're storing different items, uh, if you're the corner versus the the facility screw. Uh, but technically, it would be used for storage, which is is the continued use, but we need to go through that with the city uh to make sure that we get approval for it. The next item is a pretty big item there, and it's shocked me. Um. I've been working with district court on defining how we're going to finish. Building ten. Um, so right now, we currently have two courtrooms that are. That are pretty much finished. Uh, we need to do some modifications to those courtrooms. Uh, but this would predominantly be. Creating the office space for district court so that they could move staff out of the current Superior Court facility down into the new building ten. Um, we originally thought that that would be right around one point two million. And the most recent estimates that I got from our architect, uh, from their estimator was closer to two point five million. Now. I fell out of my share when I saw the estimate um and kind of called him on the phone immediately and said, this is, this is pretty scary. They've got a. A forty percent contingency in there, and and I'm not so sure that the current market warrants a forty percent. I think if we were back in twenty twenty one. Um, you definitely were seeing some serious supply issue shortages. Uh, we've definitely seen an increase in the materials that we would need uh to to finish that building. So the plumbing and the H VAC. Um, that that definitely has an increase that has continued. Uh, into the future, and I think that's probably the one of the bigger portions of this. Um, this this contract uh to finish that building. But uh, but right now, the current estimate that I have is two point five. I think we can actually get it down. Um, but I'm thinking that it's probably gonna be. One point eight to two million, um, which is still pretty big. The next item on there is the, we have an elevator in our Superior Court that's currently not working. And so Kelly Fraser has been working with the elevator company to figure out how do we move forward on this? Uh, I received some good news this morning from Kelly that he may be briefing the board on. Um, that uh we got an estimate for just an operational repair. And the operational pair, I thought he said was a hundred and. Hundred and eighty. Kelly, are you on?
Yes, uh, one sixty one, one three three seventy two.
There you go. So hundred hundred and sixty two thousand, basically. So much better than the four hundred thousand. So we can, we can modify that number. Uh, I put a placeholder in here, uh, which is just a placeholder. It's for the North Mason facility, so. First and foremost, um, want to get that building. Modified so that our sheriff's office in the North Precinct can operate out of that building. Uh, and then potentially do some other work in there that would allow. Other departments uh within the county and potentially some offices within the county to provide services to our residents in North Mason uh on a on a periodic basis. And then I also put in the most recent request that we received from the sheriff's office remodel. So when you total all these up, you know, we were looking at about three point five million, which scared me because. That pretty much eat ate up all of the resources that we had. Uh, and then some. And so I wanted to, I wanted the board to have an opportunity to kind of discuss and prioritize. How we want to move forward on some of these things. Uh, on the bottom there, I I provided you with a. Uh, summary kind of to date of how much we've received in real estate excise tax compared to twenty twenty two. So you can see there that we've seen some pretty significant. So you can see there that we've seen some pretty significant declines. It's about a thirty six percent um decrease over twenty twenty two. Be happy to answer any questions and, and continue the discussion on prioritization.
Mark on the numbers, just want to re-verify that we're seeing the same thing. You're showing a, a de- decrease. Uh, but I'm looking at our numbers we did today and for do forty percent. Uh, that strap, strap lights out instead of one point uh three million, we're looking at one point one two. And we're looking at a shortfall of seven hundred and fifty K compared to what we had uh thought we were going to do.
Yeah, so it was, I think that, that we're still hopeful that we're going to see some market as we get into the summer months. Um, that we won't see as low uh or as much of a decrease, but.
Summer months should have been the same as they were the summer months the year before, the, the summer months the year before that. There, there are apples and apples. It, it, we don't just load up and get more uh in the summer. Uh, and, and, and it looked different on our spreadsheet. Uh, our spreadsheet will be here to date at that time, what it was the year before that. So it doesn't work that way. Just so you know, uh, last year there was an increase in August. There'll be, we're expecting an increase in August here. You don't make up in August for what you didn't get January, February, March, April, May. That's what I'm, I'm telling you, because it already counted the same the year before and the year before that. Although sales do go up during certain months of the year, that's already built into our model. Just like the sales tax for every month, we, we choose what, what we've seen year after year in that month. That's her estimate. So just let you know, I, I, it doesn't work.
So you took a, you took a thirty percent, thirty six percent decrease over the remainder of the year.
Yeah, I did, I did forty because you're actually, you're actually close to forty from what I saw from the numbers that we just had today. That's what I thought I saw, but yeah, that's what I did. And if that, if that continues, uh, we're going to see a greater amount. And I think it may continue even worse because uh, uh, at the bare minimum, uh, the inventory, it's on the market compared to the year before.
Yes.
You can't sell more if you don't have more to sell.
Don't disagree, and that's absolutely your expert in that realm. So um, trust your opinion on that and, and that's something that I will sit down and work with, with uh Jen on to, to kind of, maybe we could reflect that in our, in our um budget amendment that we make in June.
Yeah.
Mark, um, your, your estimates for building ten. Um, do you expect that to all be paid out this year or is this broken up? Is that a project that will be paid out in twenty three and twenty four?
Uh, depending on when we move forward with the bid uh process, uh, I think it is possible that we could get it done in twenty twenty three. Um, but that would depend on um that would depend on, on the bids that we received and, and our willingness to move forward. So we do have to, there is some, there is some challenges in the sense that we're doing a construction project in an active building. So they still will be holding court within building ten um throughout twenty twenty three. And so the contractors are going to have to, to, to work around that court schedule. Um, but that's, so that, that could potentially extend the timeline out. Um, but I would imagine that the construction period for this would probably be four months.
And that makes me think or wonder if because they have to work around um courtroom use, is that going to make the cost higher as well? Because they're having to work, you know, maybe evenings or, or um weekends. So, so that's a concern for me. And, and, and just real quick, I did a, just a real quick query in, on Google for properties for selling Mason County. There's four hundred and seven. Doesn't mean they're all, they'll all sell. And doesn't mean that they'll sell high, but you know, just as a reference.
Yeah, so the, so the, the contingency for working within an existing facility uh equates in the initial bid. So the, the, out of that two point five million, it's about hundred and fifty thousand is what they're estimating. The additional cost would be for working out of a, an active building. So the, the premium for having the crews have to work around that schedule.
So if we do nothing more than what we already had, uh, as you'd said, uh, total ob- obligations, did nothing more than the elevator, which is an absolute necessity. We have no choice there. Uh, a hundred K on the North Mason because we're paying rent and we have to move. We have no choice. That's, that's changing too. Uh, what was the three sixteen?
Three sixteen is the total obligations for the.
Oh, thank you. The total obligations up above, then we already, uh, are purchasing the property. So that's five hundred and fifty and our five hundred and seventy five because we have to put in that wall. If we do nothing more than that, we're already over what we're bringing in this year. But there's other stuff that I know that we were doing. I'm just, I'm just pointing out the obvious. That actually puts us over the amount that we're expected to bring in this year if uh trends remain the same. And that does not include putting any money at all into uh building uh ten, which we know we're going to. The question is how much? So that'll come out of our reserves.
So that, that is correct, um, that, that we would have to find some additional funding sources for uh doing building ten. My other, my other concern that I've expressed with um individuals here is that when we move district court out, then there, in order for the remaining tenants of Superior Court Building um to effectively utilize that space, we're going to have to probably do some modifications in there too. Um, the other portion of this that I want to be very clear about is this, this is the cost of construction. This is not FF and E. Um, so you know, uh, furnitures and equipment that you would need to occupy the space is going to have to come out of another source of funds. So cubicles uh that they want to purchase or desks that they want to purchase, they're going to have to find additional funding for that.
Ouch. So what are you wanting from us, Mark? Do you want us to kind of set our priorities or how do you want us to go about this? Or is this just an FYI?
Well, I would, I would love to have priorities set. Um, and I do agree that we already have entered into some contracts that are, that are necessary. And, and I agree with Commissioner Netherlands' kind of quick rundown there of, of the items that I had listed on here and the status of where they're at. Um, I do think that uh, that we can as much as possible utilize our internal staff for some of the work that could be done in building ten as well as the work that is, will be done over in um the new building twelve, which is facilities and, and coroner's office, uh, as well as the North Mason facility. Uh, I do want to be careful with that because Kelly and his crew are busy with just regular work. Um, and so when we have them go in and do these projects like they did for the auditor's office, um, they do an amazing job and it looks super nice. Uh, but I, I also want to, to be a little bit careful in obligating, over obligating them. And, and then they wouldn't be able to handle the regular duties that they seem to, to stay very busy on. Um, Kelly and his crew do an awesome job, but uh, but yeah, I, I just want to kind of be careful with how much we obligate them to do.
Well, because we already, you, you brought up a good point when it comes to the others thing, uh, we already did what's down below. So therefore that balloon means air has to go somewhere and be pushed into some other space. So that means these other ten thousand dollar outlays probably are, have to be done because we already get it. We already moved them. Uh, Kelly, where are you at on those two projects? Are you already doing those? There are ninety five percent done. Then, then that other twenty thousand has to go into.
Because I think when you, well, your original bid on that, Kelly, to do uh the, the auditor's office was more than that ten thousand. The ten thousand is just kind of a estimated figure that you and I discussed in terms of what you thought your total cost would be. I think the original was right around twenty.
Yes, correct. With carpet and uh upstairs, where are you thinking we're going to be now? Just so I keep my numbers straight. I think we'll be close to that twenty. I can sure run that number and figure out exactly where we're at. Twenty combined or, or twenty separate? Because right now you have twenty and uh ten for carpet and ten for remodel. Huh? Twenty combined. Okay, so that's, all right. So it's basically uh one, one, seven, five. One million, one hundred and seventy five K on the bare minimum if we do nothing else. Which is uh fifty thousand above what we'll probably get.
So, so you're, let's see.
Will be.
Did you, did you modify that um Superior Court elevator to be?
Yes.
What's a hundred and sixty two thousand?
Yes, and I did not touch at all, though, uh, building ten, we're still going to have to, that, that's ongoing. We, I just don't know how to put that in for a number. Okay, well, Mark, can I talk about that elevator for one second?
Absolutely.
So the elevator came back and uh, as you see in your paperwork, that uh hundred and sixty one, that is to fix it and get it running. That is not to put it up to the twenty nineteen standards. But it, it could be at, we'll put it to that standard and rebuild the whole thing. It is three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand, but we are grandfathered in so that one sixty one will put us to where we have to go and we can operate the elevator. How many years that give us? I know you don't have a crystal ball. Uh, well, the last one lasted from uh thirty nine, so fifty years, I would hope. Okay, well, I was, I was going to be smiling if you said ten, so. It, it definitely gets used to more often today than it did back in the day. And we know a lot of storying up there, so it definitely gets used more than it used to be, but yeah. So with that being said, I think we still probably need to carve out, out of the two point five million, uh, you know, going with Commissioner Shute's question. We probably still need to carve out probably a million for this, this year on ten. Uh, and if we do that, then that takes our reserve down uh to basically one point three. When I say our reserve, that's, you know, cash on hand, if we even do go that route, if it costs more than.
I'm sorry, I'm just doing some quick.
That's all right. I didn't include the sheriff's office remodel either, by the way.
Yeah, okay. So I just wanted to be respectful in the sense that they, and requested that, and so that was on my list. Um, so, so I think that, that what I need to do is I needed to, to kind of come up with a figure of not to exceed on building ten and then move forward from there. I think that the, I mean, last time I, I talked to the, to the um architect and I had him kind of break it down in terms of what it would cost to do each component of building ten uh as well as pushing them on, do we really need? I think that they had three or four new air handling units within that budget. And I didn't know that, I felt like that we already had one uh that was fairly new when we put in the courtrooms and was questioning whether we really needed four additional. Um, and, and they were able to, to, to push that number down. They were right around two million dollars. Um, and so if I, if I did, if I spent two million there and I modified the Superior Court elevator down to one sixty two, um, that would leave us with, and, and that's within my revised of one point three. If you want to go lower than that, this is going to change that number. Uh, but it would leave us with about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars at the end of twenty twenty three. Going into twenty twenty four, when um we know that we have an obligation of at least three hundred and fifteen thousand, um, that would have to be spent on those bonds. That's not something is, that's discretionary. So if I, if I, if I put a cap of two million dollars on building ten with that.
I'm actually not even comfortable with that much. I think you need, yeah, I think we need to keep uh money in that bank. I want to remind you that there are opportunities that sometimes come around when it comes to purchasing or doing other things that we may need that we have to have that cash on hand for, and it shouldn't be coming out of something else. That's specifically what this fund is for. So I myself, I can't see us doing more than a million uh in, in this, this year's monies. And I think that's even rough, to be honest with you.
So that would be a, that'd be a pretty significant modification to the planned work within building ten.
And remember, I'm talking this year as Commissioner Shute asked, can it be done in a two-year cycle? Uh, it may be wise for us to, to split it that way so that we, if we have the money, we can spend it next year. But if we don't, then we can't.
So I have some concerns about splitting it up just because I feel like there's, there's costs associated with bringing crews in to do work, right? So there's just a mobilization cost. And, and if we, if we, if we weren't able to do everything that we have planned within building ten, then that would, within our district court facility, then we wouldn't be able to move all of the staff out of Superior Court into building ten. So I, I would, I'm concerned about their operational capacity.
I don't know. I feel like we could re, rework the numbers. Um, I don't, do we have to stick with Helix? Or can we, if we can figure out through, through Kelly and his, his folks, if, if we can work on coming up with better numbers and, and see where we're at on there, because I do worry about getting the furniture. They can't move in if they don't have a place to sit.
That's, that's something that in, in Judge Steele, I don't want to speak for you. Uh, but in conversations that I've had with Judge Steele and, and Patsy, they feel like they have a plan for how they could do that.
Hi, George. Do you want to talk?
Uh, two points. Number one, we have gone through the floor plan uh with Mr. Neary quite a bit and look at some things we could do to shave the cost. Uh, my understanding is I'm not into construction, so um is the main thing driving the cost is the increase of the HVACs. We need to be in a situation where we continue our operations. Uh, Pat and I have discussed bringing jury trials back to this building to help with the construction down there. It can be done. It'd be a very much a pain. We might need to be able to borrow firm space periodically from Superior Court. Um, but uh there are be some requirements that we're going to need in order to be able to operate. Um, so that has to be factored in as well. It's not, um, it's not the Taj Mahal we are seeking at all. It's what we need to actually get the job to carry out the mission we have and at least go into something where it's at least what we have now. So I'm more than willing to work, uh, to see what we can do to bring the cost down. Um, but at the same time, at the, I don't want to be too snarky, but I certainly don't want to. And I tend to use a little bit of hyperbole, go to uh horse. You know, basically uh horse tables and plywood or whatever, whatever. Uh, we need to have it done right and uh, but I also get the math, I get the math. I mean, there's, money's not there and there's a big thing nobody expected. And I know one of the things driving this is Superior Court like to move into the rest of this building. But nonetheless, we can't do it in a way that makes district court not able to uh carry out its mission. And the other thing is, uh, as far as furnishings, we are going through as we speak. And Patsy's been working on that to look at what we have here that would be suitable to take down there. Uh, but from what I understand, um, you know, part of what we put in are the conduits for like the low vol, I think they're low voltage connections. There was a computer connection, but not the hardware itself. Uh, and I'm not really sure at this point how much that's going to cost. So there's some problems. We'll work as much as we can. But I do want people to understand, we need to be able to carry out our mission and we're not seeking, you know, gold-plated uh fixtures or anything like that. It's the things we need to, to do what we're, what the things we're supposed to do as far as what we do. Including leaving one of those quarters available for Superior Court. To be able to use when they need to do a jury trial. So we're doing what we can. With that, I will shut my app and I'll mute.
I appreciate that, George.
So Kelly, uh I, boy, I hope I'm not stepping it with this one uh. Years ago, I know you've got a big staff, I know you got a lot on your shoulders. Years ago, we ended up borrowing from Reed to bring in groundskeepers, to bring in uh people into your department. I can't help but wonder. What you could do with. The next two years, if you had an additional five employees. That you had working under you. Twenty-four seven, you know, you know regularly. What that would look like uh when you consider that the cost is literally. Uh five hundred K a year. If that would be beneficial, if it's something you could even take on any more than what you're doing, if it's something you'd even be interested in. I'm not asking you to do it, I'm just asking you to think about that and maybe get back to me or us later about that idea.
No, there's no doubt about uh the more people, the more we can do, there is certain things. By. I don't wanna say by law, by con- that I have to have somebody else to do, we have to get a licensed electrician to do the electrical. We have to get a licensed person to do the, to do the low voltage. I have to have somebody plumbing to do that, as far as building a wall and uh throwing up some carpet and doing that, I can do that all day long, I mean. We can do all that and save ourselves money there, but if we're still gonna have to have that plumber, that electrician. And the, and the low voltage guy come in. Um I can help pull the wire when they're doing it, I can do all that, but I'm still gonna have to pay the big dollar preventing wage. After hours, cause we can't make no noise type of stuff.
And and that's, I'm taking that into consideration, because even i- if we spent uh a million dollars this year, that's still five hundred thousand for these and. Another five hundred K to be able to do some of the other stuff. The other option is also maybe to increase it up to six hundred K and you go out and be able to find somebody that's certified to do those, to have them in-house as well. Again, I'm not asking you to do, I'm just asking you to consider all that stuff. And I'm only doing that because you did it once before for us to save our bacon, I remember that, and I don't wanna.
Yeah, I have an awesome crew now, and I'm sure we can get some people on board to do that, I mean. So, yeah.
So Commissioners, that might be something just to consider. And again, only because it worked before.
Uh Mark, so in the, you know, uh we're probably gonna be at a point here where we have to look at. These projects kind of in the fund quarterly, right, so that we're keeping a closer eye on Reed than we have had to in the past. So for for quarter two, you intend to. To spend. On the elevator, which is non-negotiable. Get started on. The North Precinct project. Um and then the building twelve. Is that, I mean, is that all quarter two, quarter three kind of work?
Uh definitely quarter two. And so I would hope that we would be able to, um I mean, obviously depending on where we're, we're allocating our staff to do the work, right? Um if I, if I had Kelly's staff available to. Uh if they were working on on building ten, it would just be only building ten. Um if they were available, then they would be working on the. Building twelve and and the north, the north Mason. So if, yes, and and that would be in quarter two and three.
Yeah, so I mean, I I don't, I I I really appreciate you mentioning earlier that, you know, if you broke building ten up into. You know. Multiple additional phases, there's mobilization costs and and things that go along with that. You know, and so I ask about kind of taking a quarterly approach to this, and just in terms of, you know. You know, there's still some maybe refinement that can happen and. Taking a look at the plans and seeing what, you know, what the reality is gonna be over there in building ten, but you know, maybe you don't release a bid until. You know, later on, uh you know, later in the year, then maybe you had anticipated or or something along those lines. Just as we're tracking the fund, um I I don't. Uh I'll kind of defer to you and Kelly on. How much is reasonable to do even with an expanded staff um. Uh you know, I don't know that that's, I don't know that that's my first choice, but it's, 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 I guess, an option um. So I, I mean, I, we just. We just know that the longer we take on. Actually getting the project done, that that that's also gonna cost us money as well.
And I don't know how it would work in this market, when we did this before, it was a market where we could go out and get people to. Come on to our, come on board for a year, two year under Reed. And that's what Kelly had, was able to pull off before, I don't know whether that's even doable now.
There's more to it than the market is, I mean, the people are far and few between today, I mean, you can't even get in uh. A seasonal out at the parks at this point in time.
Yeah, well, great questions. So I could. Yeah, I I I think that we can continue discussions with um Helix on what it looks like to do components of building ten. Uh and then. I I can ask them that question, right? So if if we broke it up into phases, what would that look like? Uh what would that look like in terms of overall cost, right? If I only was able to do. A portion of it. Now, we're still moving forward on getting it completed um. I can work with District Court to prioritize uh the work that we wanted to do, and then. District Court would just have to understand that that we wouldn't be completed, so they're not moving into it, it would be a, it would be a slower process. So, cause they really can't move into it until they, until it's completed, so that they can actually operate out of there.
But then again, as Kelly's looking at it, you may be able to find ways to to. To utilize some of those spaces to make it work for the, for the moment, and then later look at it uh. So I guess what I'd like to ask is that we go ahead and close out on this for the moment, and have you look at our questions, see what you can do and bring back an update next week or the week after. So we can actually make an educated decision. On going forward, I think we all agree, we have to, we had, we had more of. Spent that is not even up for negotiation. Uh than we have coming in, so we have to do something.
I can do that.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Mark.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mark, thank you, Kelly.
That's all, that's all we had, Commissioner Trask. Oh gosh, um I I I have some, but in the interest of time, I'm just gonna let you go, I mean, I don't think it's anything essential, I can update you individually on. My, I had a great conference uh ended last week with county administrators throughout. Uh the state of Washington and and really felt like it was uh productive. Um got some things figured out for opioid abatement as we move forward. Uh with the individuals that are within our region, so I think we have a good path moving forward there. Um really had a a great discussion on challenges that we're seeing, and and we're seeing those same challenges across the state. So how do we find employees in certain categories? Um you know, how do we manage uh the existing facilities that we have as they continue to get older? Um it was, it was a good, good con- good conference and and actually was able to establish some. New relationships with other county administrators throughout the state that I think it'll be beneficial in the future.
Great, good, good, all right, let's move into um Commissioner Discussion, or do we wanna do that, let's, let's go ahead, if you guys don't mind. Let's go ahead and um. Move into public health, then public works, and then have our commissioner up. Discussion, does that work for you guys? All right, and so before um we move into public health, I wanted to reach out to um our undersheriff. And ask him if he could just kind of quickly. Let us know, I know they had a very busy this weekend. And if he could just give us an update, he's also involved in um. The Health Department's. Discussion or briefing, so. I'm sure if you, if you could maybe tell us, give us a little update about what's going on and and. What we need to do, what what we need to know.
Yeah, you bet, um as you know, it was a very busy weekend, if you saw the internets. Uh the city had a. Kind of started the weekend off with a uh homicide and attempted homicide. In a vehicle here in the city up on Capitol Hill. Um it was definitely a targeted uh event from people who we presume probably know each other. Um that was immediately followed by two. Uh drive-by shootings in the city that were confirmed, and a third one that was reported, but not necessarily confirmed by evidence. As, as any agency does, uh the city has had some staffing. Problems recently, and so they called us out to help with the homicide investigation, and then ultimately we. Ended up helping with the uh drive-by shooting investigations at the same time. Um there are uh five people in custody from those events, three of them from the. Uh homicide and attempted homicide, and two of them from the drive-by shooting that occurred up on Fairmont. Uh Fairmont Avenue. So at the same time that that was occurring, uh the county had a disturbance out in the Dale Dayton Trails area, which uh. Involved some sort of uh altercation between two people and wish firearm was discharged in the house. Uh that round went through the floor of the house and hit somebody that was in the basement, uh hit them in the hand. So um that person is doing fine, uh medical follow-up. And then uh yesterday af- while after our folks had been out all night uh dealing with those investigations. Um we had another uh shooting up in the north end. Uh again, this was a disturbance and altercation between two people who knew each other and. Uh fight ensued and uh shooting occurred, struck one person in the leg, that person is uh being uh. Uh treated as well. So um the a combination of a whole bunch of things going on. Uh the city's having some definite manpower issues. Right now is a lot of law enforcement agencies are, so they uh reached out to us to ask them to give them a hand, so our. Our detectives were out uh pretty much all weekend between helping the city on their investigations as well as. Uh doing our investigations as well. So uh yeah, kept us very busy, obviously, it's costing the county uh. Uh quite a bit of money and overtime for all the hours that our folks have to be out on these, on these events. Um another challenge that we're seeing from this right now is um. Uh because of the ongoing investigations that we've had with uh our previous homicide up in the north and and some of the events. Uh recently, we've had to impound numerous vehicles uh for evidence, and as of. Yesterday, our evidence facility is just completely. Crammed full of cars, we have no room for another uh vehicle in that facility, so. Um definitely don't have enough room there. Absolutely. Nothing to do with uh um. Lack of effort on the county's part trying to find a a space that was bigger, I mean, we, we assisted. Uh Mark and Kelly and all the folks in trying to find a, a different facility, and we found the best one that was available at the time. So uh and we greatly appreciate all of, all of the help that they did in getting that set up and running, but. For future planning and, you know, dovetailing off the REIT discussion that you were having, uh that facility is definitely uh. Uh on the small end of what we need to do, basic operations, so. Uh that's kind of an overview of what was going on this weekend, do you have any specific questions, uh Commissioner Trask or other commissioners?
No, I just thought it would be a a good idea for us to kind of give an, get an idea of. Of how busy you folks have been. And um. Just kind of an update too for the public.
Yeah, and you know, the uh, the one thing I would add is. You 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 think about how busy the weekend is with all of those events, but. Uh those are events outside of all the normal calls for service, so I I have our screen up right now, and currently we have. Uh close to twenty open calls that our folks are, that are in the queue and waiting to get to because they're on other priority details and. The weekend is no different, they've got those calls stacking up at the whole time that they're dealing with these critical incidents, so. Yeah, it's definitely manpower intensive.
So undersheriff, uh as for space, hopefully this will help, be helpful, uh we had all discussed, and the sheriff had gone out and. The plan is to fence in for storage uh that back area. Uh behind the uh new station uh that will help with some of that. Be able to spread that out for you.
Yep, I know that uh Mark and uh his folks have been having discussions with us about uh potential for. Uh maximizing, maximizing that space out there, and definitely appreciate those ongoing conversations, but. In the short term, we're, we're definitely really cramped, so if we uh come to you with any uh crisis situations for. Uh especially vehicles involved in serious incidents or homicides, because we have to preserve that evidence. That's why, it's not for a lack of effort on anybody trying, it's just no space was available at the time that we were going through this process.
And just to let Mark and the other commissioners know, uh that property actually goes back much further than uh where it is cleared. There's a lot more room that we just had never discussed. Making it larger. But maybe we need to, if they need that much in the future. As I said, you can't pick when these things happen all at one time, boom, 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 it is what it is. It's not lack of trying, it's not like anything, it's just the way it is.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you, Sheriff.
And just appreciate the partnership between you all and the city and State Patrol and. Um everybody was, I know it was super active this weekend, so glad everybody on our side. Came home safe.
Yeah, absolutely, and I I I neglected to mention that, but we absolutely had State Patrol troopers out helping us, we had an aircraft out to help us on one of the. Drive-by shootings, which enabled us to um catch a couple of the, couple of the people involved, and so yeah, definitely uh. Uh everybody drops jurisdictional boundaries and comes together to help when it comes for citizens of Mason County and getting the job done, and that's definitely what happened this weekend.
That's excellent, thank you so much for, for the, for the update, now I guess you're involved in the next. Agenda item with public health.
Yeah, but I'll just hang back and let them do their thing, I'm sure they'll be more eloquent than me on that.
Okay, good afternoon, um I'll go ahead and take, um I'll give a general overview, and then undersheriff Adams, if you wanna chime in. Once we get to some of the details of it and talk about our site visit, we can do that. Um I think this is very timely, um the item that we have, again, it's joint between Public Health and Human Services and the Sheriff's Office. And we've been engaged in some conversation over the last few months to discuss what. A co- a law enforcement co-responder program might look like in Mason County, um as you, you know. Can guess from just undersheriff Adams sharing the events over the weekend, um their time is better spent responding to these kinds of calls. Um but in reality, law enforcement does get, uh there are a lot of. Behavioral health-related crises called that don't necessarily rise to the level of. Needing law enforcement engagement or even needing somebody to be incarcerated, so. Currently, Mason County does have some crisis services in place, um contracting with Olympic Health and Recovery Services. But that isn't really sufficient to meet the current need, um we share these services with another county or other counties, I'm not sure if it's just Thurston. Um and the hours are very limited, so. Either crisis response is very slow, sometimes not at all, sometimes by the time they show up, the person in question isn't able to be located. A co-responder program is something that would be dedicated to Mason County, embedded with the Sheriff's Office. Um seven days a week, the overnight as well as during the day. We actually, um undersheriff Adams, myself, Chief Dracula, and our behavioral health navigator Jamie Ellerton. Actually did a site visit with the Thurston County Co-Responder Program. In their sheriff's office, it's called the Scout Program, it's the sh- that stands for the Sheriff's Community Outreach Utilization Team. And we got to learn a little bit more about how their program operates. And I think it's something that we've decided as a group is something that would be easy to model in Mason County. Um the way that they do their program is they have two teams um each with a crisis or a. Uh peer and a crisis clinician, so I think that there's different um. Qualifications and certifications in order for those people to be able to really connect with the individuals who are experiencing those behavioral health crises. Um do a little bit of social work and get them connected to the, the, the resources that they need. Um and they work seven days a week, I think they overlap sometime in the middle of the week so that they can hand off cases if there's anything that needs. Long-term follow-up, um but it's something that. According to the staff at the Sheriff's Office in Thurston County, they have seen a significant difference in their ability to outreach to individuals. Who are experiencing these kinds of crises, it's something that they don't ever wanna do away with, and it's something that we would really like to um. Pursue in Mason County. So um I'll kind of leave it open for undersheriff Adams, if there's anything that you wanna add. Just to kind of that high-level overview of what we've learned about the. Just to kind of that high-level overview of what we've learned about the program. I think I can speak a little bit to what the funding need would be, um, we would, we see this as being something, this is something that Thurston County does. Um, it comes out of their treatment sales tax, so we have the funding available, the cost to our treatment sales tax in Mason County would be. A hundred and eighty thousand dollars for um, funding for the positions, so. Um, Olympic Health and Recovery Services would provide half of that, as well as the actual staff.
So Melissa, to be clear, it's, it's really a roughly three hundred and sixty thousand dollar program. That.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, thank you for that. I was confused for a minute.
So then the Olympic Health and Recovery side is um, covered by some of the funding that they receive, but also in large part by Medicaid. Um, because of the client population that they're dealing with.
And our con- contribution would come out of where exactly again you said?
Treatment sales tax.
And tha- and we have that available uh, to cover.
Yes, I don't have the current um, balance available at the moment, but we do have that available.
Commissioners, I myself. You know, we got, what was it, the under sheriff just said, he has twenty calls on, on his uh, board right at the moment. No matter what, there's handoffs and allow them to go out and answer those other twenty calls. Uh. After that's done, uh, either that, our officers quite often will stick with them the whole time and. There's no way to get to those other calls, so I see this as a, as a good opportunity.
I do wanna add as well that, um, because we've had a Behavioral Health Navigator program in our county for the last year. Um, that program itself has really shifted as well because of the need for more outreach to these types of calls. Um, so as part of pursuing a co-responder program with the Sheriff's Office, we would also be. Doing a little bit of assessment of what additional gaps there would be, because the peer on the co-responder team does do a little bit in terms of. Connecting individuals to resources, but in terms of the longer. Or the more inten- intensive type of case management, we would still need to maintain a Behavioral Health Navigator. But um, we really wanna ensure that there are clear roles and responsibilities between those two programs. So that we know exactly what types of calls need to go to the navigator versus what the peer or the crisis clinician on the co-responder team would do.
Oh, I support it, I think it's a great opportunity.
Yeah, I, I, I do as well and. Next, next steps would be working on a contract and finalizing some of those details and scope of work things, is that? That's the plan?
Yes, so um, I think the Sheriff's Office and Public Health and Human Services will. Be meeting again here shortly to really discuss what the next steps are, and we hope our goal is to be ready by the first week of May. Um, with contracts to brief and hopefully vote on.
Great. So for the commission, the mental health tax, uh. Fund. And eighteen was four hundred. Nineteen, uh, six hundred. Twenty, seven fifty, then eight oh two and twenty-one, one point two million in twenty-two and two million. Two point two. Yeah, two point two million now. So, it's there.
Excellent.
Any other questions? Well, sounds like it, you, you've got to go ahead.
Okay, thank you, we'll, we'll get to work on this.
Nice job, Melissa.
Thank you, under Sheriff Adam.
Uh, under Sheriff Adams, are you coming up with the, the acronym that you wanna use?
Uh, yeah, that's, that's, Melissa's been doing all the work, I'll, I'll let her come up with something, Smithy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It looks like now we have Ian.
Morning Commissioners. Um, an item came up on Friday, I just wanted to brief you really quickly on before my uh, talk about the infractions. Um, State Department of Health contacted me to give us a heads up that this week they're going to be issuing a press release for the. Potential uh, shellfish downgrades in the state of Washington. Unfortunately, Mason County is the only county with downgrades this year, so, uh, that may put a little. Did an increased focus on us. Uh, and they said they expected that press release to come out this week. Uh, the three areas that they're looking at downgrading are as a small area in Lily, Lily Wop. Um, a area in the mouth of the Two Year River and then potentially a portion of Anis Bay. I can go into more detail if you like, or I can uh, say that.
All Hood Canal.
Yeah, All Hood Canal. The uh, probably the most contentious one will be the Lily Wop one, uh, because that is a, a popular recreational. Uh, shell fishing beach. And they'll be probably closing about half of that, um, but this is not, none of it's final, I, I don't really like the way DOH does this, but. Every year they do their report and they say, here are areas of concern and they may be downgraded. And then they wait six months before they actually do the downgrade review. New data comes in and sometimes things are not downgraded. We're pretty confident Lily Wop and to who you will probably be downgraded. Just because of the way the data is, um, cause they use, they use like a rolling. Not quite accurate to say like this, but they, they think of it like they use an average that has data that cycles in and out for the past thirty samples. So as they take new samples, the older samples drop off and that changes where that, that average falls and where that threshold is.
What are they seeing for the rise there, the rise in what?
Well, it's, it's been, it's uh, this is what you have people call it for. So, you know, uh, okay, eagle bacteria, uh, they, a lot of them are failing. Because of that heat dome event that happened in uh, twenty twenty-one. So there, there, a lot of the stations were really high on that day. And I wish they had not sampled on that day, cause it's not necessarily um, representative, but they did, the data isn't there and they have to follow the uh, FDA. Standards, um. And the National Shelter Safety Standards, um. So we'll, we'll see what comes out of that, um, and we'll probably have to write some closure response plans. To respond to that and uh, continue the water quality work that we're doing, we were already kind of working in the Two Year area. Because we had seen that station starting to rise and we were getting concerned about that, um, Lily Wop. Is a bit of a mystery because there's not really much development upstream of Lily Wop, um. So, we'll, we're gonna do some, some digging there too. And uh, yeah, there'll be more to come, but just wanted you to have a heads up in case you start getting calls from people saying, oh my god, what's going on in Mason County?
Appreciate that.
Any further questions about that?
At the moment. For me.
Thank you.
Alright, and then the item I uh. Intended to brief today, uh, the infractions amendment. Um, Tim and I have been working on language for the infraction amendment, talking to uh, neighboring counties about. How they address the PSEA fees and we came up with uh, some recommended changes to the code. Uh, to allow us to. Charge for those uh, PSEA fees and comply with the, the state requirements. Um. And all the, all the, the recommended changes are in red. Uh, DCD is currently working on code changes that include Title fifteen, but it's gonna be a while for those. Code changes go in, so, uh. These are, I've, I've worked with uh, Kell and talked with Kell on this, and these are acceptable to get this change done sooner than later, so we can. Not have to eat those PSEA fees, uh. But uh, basically what we're looking for today is. You know, thumbs up or thumbs down on, on these changes, what you think about them, uh, whether we should move forward with the process to get these things right.
Yeah, certainly thumbs up here.
Okay.
Well, me too.
Great job, thanks for finding a way to overcome. Uh, the shortfalls that fall in front of you like that.
Thank you. Alright, well, that's, that's all I've got for you today, thank you very much.
Thanks Ian. Dave, anything else for us?
Well, uh, we had, we were um, approached this last week uh, by North Mason with an idea. Uh, of using a, an ARMP. And kind of a community connector with uh, substance abuse and mental health. And uh, we talked with the Commissioner Shudy, we're gonna be meeting on that this week. Yeah, to see, it sounds like a great idea, so we're gonna explore that idea, maybe put some, some brackets around it, let's see if we can make it work and then. Again, if it's a great idea, how do we fund it and who do we put there, so.
Sounds good.
Okay, any other questions?
Any Commissioners, anything for Dave?
Just to thank you, uh, the hub and reaching out and helping take care of their medical. Uh, supply side, uh, great job and thank you, uh, Dave.
Yeah. So, okay, that's all I have.
Thanks Dave. Alright, let's move on into public works.
Morning.
Good morning, afternoon.
Well, holy moly, yes, it is, good afternoon. Alright, well, first up, Mike has an item for us.
Yeah, we'll make it quick, uh, Satsup Palm Road Culvert Replacement Project for my office five point two zero. Um, last year we had this culvert actually fail, it's a composite culvert of uh, original culverts concrete and it's got two. Corrugated metal pipes stuck onto each end of it. And uh, in the joint field, so uh, we've got that patch back, but now we're looking to replace it. And uh, so obviously it's gonna require a road closure, but we'd like to go out to bed. Uh, purchase this uh, culvert and uh, schedule it for August twenty-first, the week of August twenty-first to close the road and. Install it.
Wow. That sounds like quite the project.
One of, one of many quite the projects.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, well, next up Commissioners, we're requesting approval to authorize Mark to sign a temporary easement. And uh, just to orient you, sorry, our map was kind of zoomed in. But this is in the Skokomish Valley, and so here's Skokomish Valley Road. Um, approaching kind of the dips area, and this is part of the project that we are working with Mason Conservation District on. To make improvements through this reach and PUD one. Is um, wanting to do some brushing and clear this area on property that we own. Um, and so that's the purpose of the temporary easement is to allow that work to happen.
Sounds good to me.
Great, glad that the project's moving forward.
Yes, it is, slowly and steadily. And then. Um, next up Commissioners, it's, it's the season with all kinds of recognition and special weeks and all of that. Um, this week is um, National Work Zone Awareness Week. And of course for. We and our partners who are working um, on our county roads to make sure they're safe and clear of instructions. To make sure we've got reliable power, clean water and other essential services. This is something that is twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. But uh, it's a week to call special attention and, and ask for the driving public to. Um, pay particular attention just to, to call attention to this. And uh, many of the work zone accidents, like accidents in general, are due to distracted driving. Speeding and following too close, and so just. A shout out to pay extra attention and keep our folks safe.
Yes, please.
Absolutely awesome.
Alright, and then next up Commissioners, it's County Engineer of the Year nomination time. And I would be honored to put together um, a submittal if, if that is. Commissioners desire.
Loretta, you and I talked uh, just recently about that, uh, I'd like you to make sure that you include that he stretched the ability of our. Employees to do things that they had never done before and the fact that they actually enjoy uh, being challenged. Uh, the, with that type of leadership, he's been able to save us money and uh. Give us the biggest bang for the buck by expanding what we can do ourselves and stuff, uh, let's see, and uh. Yeah, make sure you include different things like paving, uh, changing of uh, of roads from uh, gravel roads to paved roads and. Just overall in, increasing our whole small counties. Ability to meet whatever comes before us, and I hope you can get it to us soon, so I'd love to have a vote on it on the next meeting.
Great.
Yeah, I couldn't agree anymore, uh, you know, with submitting on that and I, you know. Certainly. Certainly support moving forward, so.
Absolutely. Alright. Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you.
Um, other, just real quick items, I know there was a question earlier on the ARPA, the status of Log Yard Road. Might have got missed in the email, but that is also a, um, a first, a next quarter activity, so we'll be preparing a. An RFP to get that going and, and under design. Uh, just a quickie tip cap met last week and a heads up that in July. They will be having, holding a community outreach. At the Shelton Civic Center, and so that will be July twelfth, that they're planning that.
Can you send us information on that?
Absolutely, yeah, and I know they're wanting to get up north as well. But have yet to lock down a, a date on that. And other tip cap activities, I believe Kel is planning to come next month. To give a quick rundown of the comp plan update and of course its relationship to the, the transportation plan. And we had a, a Zoom visitor attending from Hoodsport. So that was exciting also, so ni- nice to see the, the community jumping in on and joining on the tip cap meetings as well. And then last item I have Commissioners, we're, as you know, um. Doing some code updates, not we, primarily planning and building, and I just wanna give a shout out to. Todd and the Fire Marshal and Community Development Crew for always thinking about. All those little tangential pieces and how code changes in one area may affect others, so. Happy to uh, coordinate and collaborate on our road standards and. Um, fire code and stormwater, so. Just a, a shout out on collaboration and appreciation for that. And that's it.
Alright, great, Commissioners, do you have anything for Loretta?
Loretta, I was uh, approached by a citizen. Who was pretty upset, I, it's probably the state's issue, not ours, but you still probably. Uh, are gonna have to institute a call or something, unless it is ours, it's right on the intersection of uh. Uh, Highway three and Lakeland Drive, off to the right there, uh, he busted his axle or something. Uh, cause that hole's gotten so bad as you're making a right-hand turn.
Okay. So exiting out of.
Lakeland Drive down.
Drive onto three-headed back towards.
If you're heading south, yes.
Oh, south, mm, yeah, yeah.
Well, Sheldon, yeah, Sheldon, south.
The world flipped, yes.
I get it. Up there, up there, we always talk north and south and people that actually know the roads keep telling us we're east and west.
Alright, okay, got it. So, uh, okay. We'll get ahold of the maintenance team, uh, DOT and pass that along. The other thing I forgot to report, the outage up on Razor, um, the Sentry Link repairs were complete last week. Also.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
Great, anything else for Loretta?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, let's. Move on to um, Commissioner discussion. So let's go ahead and talk about, um. Our candidate. For the Advisory Commission or for the Planning and Commission. Anybody wanna go first?
Same, same fine to me, um, I'd be okay. Team, team fine to me. Um, I'd be okay appointing him.
Cootsport is hard to get.
Yep, I. I am comfortable moving forward with it. Alrighty, and then, um, do we have any changes in our calendars?
I don't. Think I do.
All right. I don't think I do either.
We announced the dog park thing, didn't we?
Yes. Yep. Yeah, I'm not able to attend that one. I had a previous commitment. So it's up to you two. I will be.
I, I'm going to try and show up, but it's up to Commissioner Shutey.
I, I, I let them know I'm actually out of town.
Aren't you kidding me?
Yeah, I left him. I had a previous.
The one guy that doesn't like to do stuff, but I'll be there. I'll do it. Now you got stuff you gotta do. I, I got, uh, Kevin covering for me on, on one here recently that I was going to cover for you. So.
That's, that's why there's three of us.
That's right.
No, we, we keep it busy and keep it exciting, right?
Three of us do the job of seven.
And at a lower cost. All right. Is that it?
I did have a couple of quick items, um, for discussion. So, uh, one. Commissioner, if you remember a couple of months ago, um, I brought forward a request from the ARC, um. To establish a housing consortium and I had a little bit of homework to do on that. One was to get, uh, Tim Whitehead to review it, which he did. Uh, no issues. And the second one was to talk to the city about their interest in participating since that was also, um, in, in the, uh, proposal put forward. And so. Uh, finally I, uh, got confirmation from the city that they're okay moving forward with that as well and, and would be happy to participate. So. I think McKenzie still has a, a copy of the, um. Uh, to, of the proposal. And so we can, we can reroute that back, uh, for review and then action, um, if, if the commission is still okay with that.
Yeah. How would you like to do that, uh, Commissioner? Do you want to, you know, action that the county join that or that, uh? Uh, you join on the board. It was, I, I didn't understand that part. I'm good either way.
I don't, I don't, I don't know. I, I, I haven't really played thought into that, to be honest with you. So I can, as, as she's kind of putting the document together, I could maybe doodle on that. Revisit.
I'm definitely interested if you, however you put it together, I'm good either way. So.
Great. And then the other one, um, so kind of an interesting, uh, thing. You, you've all been filing or following the. Uh, issues with, uh, Fire District twelve about Matlock. Um, and so the, it appears that the recall was upheld by the Supreme Court. Um, and we've moved forward. There's a lot they have to do, um, on that side of things. But I was, uh, at a community meeting over the weekend and. Was approached by a number of people asking us what our appointment process would be if that, if that recall is successful. And so, um, I said, I don't know. We've never had to appoint a quorum, uh, of, uh. Uh, for independent jurisdiction before. And so. Um, obviously one of the things that they're really concerned about is, is transparency, um, given everything that they've been throughout there and, and sort of. Getting back their fire district. Um, so I, I was hoping that maybe we could ask Mark to sit down with Tim Whitehead and, and maybe Marie. Uh, in the auditor's office to just kind of outline wh- what we're allowed to do and when. Um, so that we have enough, so that we know what we're doing, um, and so that we can, we can proceed in a, an efficient way for. Uh, the folks out in that fire district if, if the recall is successful. Um. But I, I have no experience. I've only had the experience of doing one appointment and that was a county partisan position. So if. It was pretty smooth.
Yeah, uh, past history. Past history, uh, they took applications for everybody that was, you know, not party affiliate. It has nothing to do with party. It was done as an independent. They brought it forward and those appointment process, the same as it would have been, uh, uh, if you were doing one, it would be that you're doing all if they're all recalled. There may be one recalled, uh, and if there's, uh, one recall, the other two get to bring it forward. Uh, if there's two recalled, then we are the ones that select them based on that. And it should be a complete open process. Anything they turn into us as an application should be released to the public.
Yeah, a hundred percent. And I think, I, I think they're just, you know, they, they just want to know what to expect. And I, I think I'm actually. More interested in, you know, at what point we're allowed to solicit those applications. Um, you know, I, I, obviously, I, so I don't know if it has to be done. After the election is certified because there would be, you know, there's just a lot of details there. So. I just, I, I want us to put a little bit of thought into it now so that we're, we're all clear on what the expectations are come August.
Agreed.
It's been quite the process.
For sure. Yeah.
Well, it would be good to finally get this fixed.
Hmm.
Well, at least you'll get the signatures first. That's.
Yeah, yeah. So they have until May third to collect signatures and sure they're. They had a lot of people at the meeting. We should, we just, we have to be prepared.
Yep.
Until I had.
That was good. Commissioner, do you have anything for us?
Just a motion to adjourn if you're, when you're ready.
Second.
All right, we're adjourned. You guys have a nice week.